Good morning. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Selectment meeting for Monday, March 6, 2023. To order, it's being held in a hybrid fashion. And with that, Charles, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the job, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charles. Item three, item two, public forum. Anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Okay. No one wishing to address. We're going to move on to item three, approved minutes. Three dot one will be the February 6, 2023 meeting. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We need to add the bond authorization.
Yes, we will.
Do that in a moment?
Yeah, do that.
Okay, sure. So I'll make a motion and approve in a second.
Any comments, questions, et cetera? Hearing none. Let me try your minds. Those in favor, select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Three dot two, the minutes of February 21, 2023, regular meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any comments, questions, changes, et cetera? Hearing none. Let me try your minds. Select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. All right. Is there a motion to add an agenda item to discuss or take possible action on the bond authorization projects that we discussed during our budget deliberations? Is there a motion to add it?
So moved.
Then I'll second.
In a second. Okay. Why don't we move that under, we'll do that after item seven, so it'll be seven A? Okay. Great. All right. Let me try your minds. Select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. Item four, town engineer. Janice Place here. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
How are you?
All right. So this is, um, this is for the food scrap recycling program. Things kind of moved quickly, so. Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We had some good response to it. I think we had about 385.
I think two more came in.
287 came in to participate in the pickup program, but we're also going to be doing food scrap collection at the transfer station. So the grant was afforded to us by Connecticut Deep, and it's a program that we've been working for months with Deep and their hired consultant, Waste Zero, and SCROG to kind of formulate this program. And the grant agreement kind of prescribes the fact that Deep is working with Waste Zero as a consultant, and then we then take over after five months utilizing Waste Zero as our consultant as well, using the grant funding. And then also for the food scrap collection at the transfer station, they prescribed Blue Earth to be the vendor who will do the food scrap collection. Blue Earth currently operates in town. They have about 100 customers in Guilford.
They're divisions of this, Renner.
So, yeah, so Blue Earth has been operating in town for probably three to four years. There was an effort between Branford and Guilford residents. It may have been involved with the Guilford Sustainable Task Force that kind of tried to gain interest on people who wanted to do food scrap collection. And so they, those folks pay per month to have their food scraps already collected by Blue Earth because they're like one of the only games in town except for one other vendor who's located mostly in Fairfield County. And so they were selected since they're already doing work in town with collections from some of these residents in Branford and Guilford to be the vendor to do the food scrap collection at the transfer station for us. So it's sort of like single source vendor in this case, since the program has already been established and established these vendors as the vendors to use.
Will the drop off site at the transfer station have some information about what foodstuffs and everything?
Yes, I actually had someone from, I think it was Westport, reach out to me, and they do food scrap collection already at their transfer station, and they were asking about our pilot program with the haulers being involved. That woman was very kind to send me kind of a poster that they already use, so we can't have to reinvent the wheel. There's certainly going to be, yes, an effort to show what can go in the bin because we don't want it to be contaminated with things that shouldn't go in it. Food scrap collection is beyond your backyard composting.
Yeah, that's where I was going with it.
Yeah.
That's a narrow window.
Yeah, in your backyard, you're not going to put meat products and cheese and things like that or like desserts that you don't finish. Why you wouldn't finish them, I don't know. So any food product can go into food scrap collection, whereas backyard composting, you're primarily focusing on, you know, fruits, vegetables, yard waste and some, you know, some paper and things like that that are compostable. So, yes, so it'll, you know, and the effort here really is to reduce the amount of trash that has to go to the incinerators, to the facilities. And, you know, Deep is quite interested in this to see how much we can reduce trash that has to go to the incinerators in the state.
And they measure that by weight?
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
What's the measurement for?
Well, just how much they're tipping at the.
So, yeah, so with the program, you're, you're going to have separate bags. The bags will be provided as part of the program. You put your food scraps in one bag and your trash in another bag, and you still continue to do your other recycling, your single stream recycling. And you can, this is for the hauler pickup, and both bags will go in your trash bin. But when, they'll be brought to a different facility, a specific facility that is set up to separate the bags. So they'll be tipped on the floor of a facility, I believe it's in Wallingford. And at that facility, they will separate the food scrap bags from the trash bags, and then the food scrap bags will be brought to Quantum Energy, where they'll transfer the food scraps into energy. And the trash will go to its typical, you know, incinerator facility. And they're going to be weighing these to really get an understanding of how much, you know, we can take out of the waste stream by doing the food scrap recycling.
The rules of thumb are 30% of all solid waste is contained in food scraps. So if we're able to take 30% out of our waste stream at the, at the transfer station, which is going to be unlikely because we'll never get 100% compliance, right?
Right.
But it has the potential to impact what we pay in tipping fees.
Right.
Because of separating out these food scraps. So one of the things that we are already starting to contemplate, because we have to as a result of the program with Deep, we have to have a plan in place or put a plan or proffer a plan to Deep as to what we will do for continuing a program like this. So what Janice and I have been talking about, we're contemplating continuing as well as First Selectment Alliance in Madison, is continuing the pickup at the waste transfer station as part, that would be the key component of our plan. Because we cannot, we can, we cannot force the haulers to continue to do this kind of program. We have no, we have no teeth and strength in dealing with, we can't even get them to register.
We could by ordinance, but it would be impossible to probably, you know, enforce.
But I think an education program, an article, something like this.
Yeah, we've been, we had a recent article in the paper, and we're doing as much as we can with outreach. Certainly, the folks who are selected for the program with the haulers, we have all their information. They'll be notified if they're selected to participate, and they will be provided with, you know, detailed information on how to, how to do the program, what to recycle.
How is the participation of restaurants at this point?
So restaurants are a separate entity because they do their own trash pickup, you know, they, they're not, they hire their own haulers. There is an effort, I think, going forward to reach out to those folks to see if they want to do some kind of, even if it's collaborative, you know, with other restaurants in town to identify a bin just for food scraps. But again, it's, it's a pay, you know, it's a pay program. It's a voluntary program at this point. But it's something that is, that could be beneficial as well.
Yeah, that's got to be the, I would think.
Yeah, there's been a, the schools have been one of the primary focuses. And I think prior to COVID, we were working on.
Taco was supposed, we were supposed to set up a food.
Collection, yeah, yeah, the schools, but then COVID hit, and I don't know what happened with that program. But.
That's great. Two things happen there. You get the food waste out of the stream, you're educating children.
Yes, that's where we thought it would make a nice impact. Yeah, but.
I mean, that's the future.
Right. In fact, I met with Representative Moore Raider last week on a couple of items, one of which was what are we doing with the schools' food scraps? So we have, actually, this afternoon at 3 o'clock, a meeting with Pam Roach, Moore, and myself. Moore is also on the Environment Committee, so she's going to be, there are some, there were a bunch of different bills floating around up there. So we're, our intention is to restart that.
Yeah. One of the challenges in the state right now, that this can't be widespread and mandated, is that the facilities to do this, to take the food scraps and to either turn them into energy or compost them on a wide scale are few and far between. So it's really been a chicken and the egg process. And while Deep has been trying to encourage more, you know, food to energy facilities to open, there really aren't enough located throughout the state to make it really, you know, affordable and feasible to send food scraps there. There's also some state legislation, which I'm, I'm not overly familiar with, but about a distance from a facility that you're required to recycle food scraps. But it's also still, you know, kind of in its infancy.
Working program.
Yeah, the infrastructure needs to be there to support the programs.
If anybody's interested in learning about this biodigester program, there is an outfit in Sullington called Quantum BioPower, who is really the only collection site that I'm aware of, that's, that's fully operating as a biodigester and turning it into energy.
You mentioned that we're coordinating with Madison. How about Branford?
Branford's government runs their own, the reason we're talking with Madison is because we share that transfer station, so.
I think Branford may be just doing at the transfer station, and I'm not sure if they're part of the grant program.
I've not seen their name.
Yeah, I don't think they're part of the grant program. And they, you know, Branford's different from us in that they do trash pickup in town as part of their tax, you know, taxation. So they're able to control their program a little more.
Can people jump in at any time? Or is there like?
No, we had a deadline of last Friday for people to sign up. We got a good response. We were hoping to serve 350 residences, but it's going to depend on the haulers to really set up moves that makes sense for them, that it doesn't end up being too costly to drive all over town and pick up one bag or something. So we'll know soon kind of how many participants we'll have from town, but certainly we will still have it at the transfer station for everybody.
Location thing could probably help that along. I mean, the people that don't get selected, but.
Yeah, they still have the, yeah, the transfer station will still be an option. Yep, yep. So basically, we just asked, I'm just asking you to approve those two vendors, that sole source, so we can, you know, make expenditures to them.
Thank you. Is there a motion to, like, Waste Zero and Blue Earth has sole source for the food waste diversion pilot program?
So moved.
A second.
Second, second.
Question, Sue?
No, second.
Just second. Thank you. Anything further?
Hearing none. Let me try your minds. Select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item five, discuss and take possible action on the noise control variance application for Care Fest taking place June 10, 2023. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. Any comments or questions? No? All right. Let me try your minds. Oh, and I need a motion, all right? I need a motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Let me try your, any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds. Select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye. That motion carries. Okay. All right. So item seven now, because I got a. All right. Discuss and take possible action to set a public hearing date for an ordinance change related to cannabis. So Sue, as a result of your suggestion, and one that was really just a reminder that we had talked about doing it some time ago, setting a public hearing date to discuss the various implications of legalization of the 11 different types of operations that can take place related to cannabis. I'm thinking this probably should be an evening meeting.
Definitely.
And one that, do you think it needs to be in person or think Zoom, hybrid?
Hybrid, yeah.
Hybrid, I think hybrid.
Hybrid. Okay, so I, I think we ought to probably.
You think we should schedule more than one because of questions that might come up at the person?
Could, yeah.
Wait and see.
If, yeah, if we need a second one.
Canton did this. They probably, did you hear about that? They had tons of people turn out. It went from, Canton, Connecticut. They had a public hearing, and they had met very high attendance, high emotions both ways. It went on for hours, and the Board of Selectmen or whatever governing body carried it over to the next night. So we might want to get ahead of that and just have two dates, you know?
That could work. That makes sense. And have it the next night.
Thing of it is, if we do.
It's because we can, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
So that, the meeting, that there's going to be another one in a week or something, so we don't get into a motion.
If we do hybrid, that means that people coming in person, it's, it's the room upstairs at the community center. It's not the.
Not the big room.
Not the big room.
That room works.
Doesn't hold that many people.
50 people.
Yeah, yes. Wouldn't, we wouldn't also have Mike there taping it because that takes up a lot of room. Okay.
Right. That's true.
Yeah, because the other day it was quite.
Targeted.
Yeah.
Okay, it's only chairs. You could get one.
Yeah, that's true.
I wonder if it's worth the trade off of not conducting it in hybrid fashion in order to have the big room. And that small room is small.
Yeah.
That's why I'd say let's, let's reserve a couple of days so we see how it breaks. I mean, we're assuming things at this point.
I kind of lean towards Sue, myself, but.
In person.
I'm willing in person, in the big room, but I'm, I won't, I'm not going to fight whatever we decide.
I, again, I could, I, my preference is always in-person meetings. You know, although hybrid has given us the opportunity to expand beyond what we normally are able to track based on people's schedules and constraints. But given the fact that this does have the potential to be something that might generate a lot of interest, although our polls and so forth haven't suggested that that would be the case. So I could support going to the big room.
Can I, can I throw out the inevitable compromise, sort of split it? If we're going to have two meetings, do the first one in person downstairs, and presumably we'll get the bigger crowd. And if that's video, people then can see it, and then we have the second one as hybrid, if people want to come in.
Yeah.
This way, we may be as many people as possible, as many people live as possible. Assuming that's not too disruptive for people.
I don't think so. I don't think so. All right. Now we're looking for dates.
Are you looking in March or April?
I'd like to get something into March, at least one at the end of March, maybe another one early April. The good news is the planning and zoning has moved by a month. The zoning code update largely around the issues surrounding affordable housing. So this gives us a little bit of time. But what I'd like to try to do is, you know, end of March, if possible. Now, of course, this is dependent on room availability and so forth too, right, over at the community center? So. Would? Let's see, Wednesday night, we, Wednesday nights, we usually run up against planning and zoning, but that's not, that's not going to affect that. Wednesday or Thursday, the 29th or 30th?
I'm away that whole week.
Okay.
I got surgery on the 22nd, so for two weeks after that, I could do it Zoom probably, but I don't know about person.
Got it. Okay. Well, maybe, maybe we reverse the order a little. Right? Do Zoom on the 29th or 30th? Would you be able to do a Zoom remotely? Or are you going someplace that doesn't have internet? Bora bora or something.
Going to be in Florida. Who knows? No, I, I could try. I can't guarantee that I could be part of it.
But at that point, what were we, then, might make it easier for two of us.
Yeah, okay, so we're looking at.
The very first week of April would be easier.
Yeah, that Thursday night, there's a tribute to former First Selectman Carl Balustraci at the Guilford Library, which I was intending to attend, yes.
I'll point out too, that's Holy Week Passover. That's all that first week of April. So those nights are kind of tough. Unless we did it early in the.
The fourth is the annual budget meeting of April, Tuesday. If we did it Monday, the third, that doesn't cover Passover.
Right.
I guess it covers Holy. I don't know.
That's, I think that sounds good.
Yeah. Let's, let's, let's do the third, and then pick a date for the following week. So the third is going to be in person? Will you be back by then? You'll be back by then, Charles? You'll be, you think you'll be able to? We'll, we'll send a car to pick you up. All right, so the third is going to be in person, Monday, the 10th or that week?
I got plenty.
That's, yeah, the 10th. I don't know what Easter Monday is, but.
In some countries, it's a holiday.
Well, is it a legal holiday?
No.
Yeah.
Want to look at this calendar too. So the week of the 10th looks like it's vacation week for the schools. I mean, this is such an important issue for the schools and families to weigh in on. I don't know. I'd hate to schedule it that week.
That's the follow-up meeting.
It's the week of the 10th.
Yeah, I know. So it's, it's the follow-up meeting that will be hybrid, so.
And it's iffy. You're not going to have it if it's.
Gotcha. Okay. I, yeah.
All right. The 10th? Has everybody got the 10th? I think we have consensus. All right, Trey. Now the question is, can you confirm the room availability on Monday night, the 3rd? And then assuming it's Zoom, do we still want to try to do hybrid? Or should we just meet here and have it as a Zoom meeting?
Oh, that's a good idea.
That's an idea, yeah.
What, I gave you, I gave you, I gave you a choice.
Meeting here as a Zoom meeting, because there's still enough room for public to come here if they.
But we could do it. Was it Zoom or hybrid?
I like the idea of the hybrid meeting. Some people.
So, so if we do, if we do hybrid, the community center, the upstairs room would be the optimal choice. This would be the secondary choice.
Yeah.
All right. Great. And Trey, that gives us plenty of time to post it and also put an agenda together. To that point, if there are specific things that you all would like to discuss, other than some of the obvious things, which were, you know, the various classifications of businesses, the things that we talked about. It, you know, the first one is an up or down, yea or nay. It doesn't really matter what the business is. But then the permutations, if the answer is yes, what are the permutations? What are the restrictions that we would like to see? So if anyone would like to just forward along, colleagues might see those sessions going, I'd be appreciative.
Right out of the gate, and not to get too into the guts of this, but I can't keep straight if we are, by population, limited to one possible retail.
No.
No.
Legislation, legislation change, that's right. We effectively kicked the can down far enough down the road that we didn't have to face that.
But by the retail location, it has to be a dedicated location.
Can't be part of a Wawa store.
You're going to throw Wawa in there.
Could if they made, if they made the investment. Okay. That's right. Okay, well, so Trey, you'll validate those, those dates and availability. Thank you. Okay. All right, so now I guess we got seven A coming in now, and that is to. And Sue, thank you, this for having brought that to Mary Jane's attention, that we never officially voted as a board to move it forward. Although I think we did have several discussions about what was, we were going to include in the bond, what we weren't going to include in the bond, what was ARPER funded, what was going to be capital, straight capital. So I think you all have in front of you, or electronically, the, the projects that we, I think, had basically agreed on, that we would move forward to, to capital bonding. I think the important thing to recall was this also had over $3.5 million for funding for Lake Quantapug. But I think you recall that I have the assurances from now comptroller Scanlon and Speaker Ritter that the bond authorizations, or the bond allocation for Guilford in last year's budget agreement will cover the, will cover that easily. We have about $7.5 million coming for in bond proceeds from the state of Connecticut, which there were, we had really two different sets of proposals, legislative proposals for those projects. The one that includes Lake Quantapug is largely for resilience projects. It included also for Falcon Road, in the event that lots of money does not appear for that project. And then Chimmy Corners as well, which was another road, it's a road elevation project. So those are the, those were the three projects that the $7.5 million earmark was, was designed to, to cover. We had, we had also put in, supplied Representative Scanlon with another project, a $7.5 million, another nearly $7.5 million project, which would have connected Long Hill to Route 77 through Bullard Drive, a plan that has been contemplated in the P O C D and the transportation plan since, excuse the expression, Christ wore knickers. And it is just one of those things that we've never been able to move. But it, with, potentially with the opportunity for funding. The decision was made that the resilience projects probably had more significance and more immediate impact than the Bullard Road project. So to that point, I'm meeting this afternoon, not only with Pam Roach, but I have a meeting with Senator Blumenthal's office around the congressional, congressional directed spending, which for those who remember the term earmarks, or in some, some quarters, they call it pork. That is now back as part of the federal, federal program. So we are, that may be one of the, that, that may be one of the projects we talked about congressionally directed spending on. We have several that we can use them. So anyway, back to the document. Any questions or comments on what we have in front of us? We have public safety communications infrastructure, which was the largest of the projects, 3.2 million, I think, folks recall. We are at end of life, an end of, end of life on the equipment that actually runs our public safety network. And so that is an upgrade on that equipment, pedestrian improvements on Hubbard Road. That's designed, that's part of the extension of sidewalks, as we've just gone up Route 77 up to the cemetery, and this would extend it down to, you know, onto Hubbard Road. The eventual plan, which is also in our transportation plan, talks about connecting all the way up to the high school. We're not going to get there here, but now with the, you know, 100 units of housing, that's, they actually, I don't know if you've driven by, that they're actually doing some clearing, so that project has actually started. So road improvements, this is what we, every two years, we include $500,000 for road reconstruction and maintenance. And ambulance replacement from fire department as well as an engine pumper. And I think we, we're given the details in terms of the age of those at the presentations.
And they, they go out of their way to maintain that equipment. I mean, it's, you know, they do a tremendous. And they, they go out of their way to maintain that equipment, I mean, it's, you know, they do a tremendous job, you just get to a point where.
Right. Vehicle port, garage storage at the police department, MJ? Want to talk just a little bit about that, there's, this, this is a bigger bucket, right? Because, you know, with what they're tending to do, with a look at the facility because of the lack of space for female officers, this sort of all morphed into one project, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, and, and there are some other improvements that need to be done at the police department, including their roof.
Right.
So there, there is additional funding, we have in ARPA. So between this authorization and some money in ARPA, we're hoping to accommodate what needs to be done there.
Great, thanks.
What is the approximate total number?
When we put, is it a hundred and fifty?
It's less than two hundred thousand, I, I know. In, in, from ARPA, so this plus.
No, no, the total, not just our, yes.
And this is also one consequence of the not having the garage building down there, I mean, these were, these were improvements that the police department needed at that location for their facilities.
Right.
And this is in lieu of that bigger building.
Right, so it's an all-inclusive project now.
And so we, now, this, this would be about four hundred thousand for that project.
Right, four, yeah, between four and four fifty.
All right, then replacement of the G U sixty-two backhoe for Public Works, and I think we, that backhoe is about a dozen years old, thirty years.
Yeah, it's, it's, we, we, the backhoes we keep for.
Right, and I think we need to recall, Dave Castro had made some pretty, pretty, pretty good observations and changed some of the plans, we had had some capital for some equipment that he said we don't really need.
Correct.
Right, so.
Yeah, he's done a really good job of revamping the needs of that department.
Okay. Any questions or comments on any of these items? Yeah, all right. So is there a motion to, to approve these as recommended to the Board of Finance for consideration? For their consideration and possible inclusion as a bond, a bond question at the same day that we do? The budget?
The budget.
Anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
There we go.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds, select woman, Renner.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Okay. Item eight, consider to take possible action to set a public hearing date of April third, twenty twenty-three, at eight thirty a.m. at Town Hall, and via Zoom to obtain comment on an ordinance to amend the code of the town of Guilford, chapter twenty-four dash four, elections voting. And I think we've got Pete on the line here, and registrars of voters are here too, so who wants to just to give us a quick synopsis of why we're doing this?
I, you folks hear me okay?
Got you, Pete.
Okay. And I didn't, are the registrars there?
We have one, yeah, we have one, someone's on the line from registrar's office, is that Gloria or Lisa?
Yeah, I, I see them, so I'll just state, we, we have maps, you remember we did the redistricting, and there are maps in the registrar's office. The actual verbal descriptions of the districts, the districts are geographical, as you know, with, you know, lines actually on a map. The descriptions were off a little bit, in one place, I think there was an east-west flipped on the language. And then there was also some lack of clarity on one of the boundary lines, so I think I'm stating that right, but this will now, these proposed changes will now match exactly the, the maps that they're using in the registrar's office. So I'll pitch to either one of them, if they're on, just to confirm that I've got that right.
Hi, good morning, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Peter said it correctly, so on one of it was a typo, east and west were reversed to two streets on one street, so it was just a typo. On the others, that, yes, Peter said it correctly. With this, we were looking at the very old ordinances, not just from two thousand twelve, but from two thousand two. And it just, something was a little off, and we were, it's our attempt to correct it and make sure the line was correct again in the language. Do you want me to tell you exactly which ones we're talking about?
I'm, I'm not sure we need that level of detail, but what, what I am concerned about is this does not impact what we had done to notify voters in the past, which was for the November election, or need to send out cards, it's not changing anybody's voting district based on what we had arrived at the first time. This is really just a language change, but no one is impacted directly on this as a result of the language change, because we've already notified everyone who's affected by the zone change, by the changes, correct?
Correct. And this, we found this out in June and July, when we brought this to the board before, so this is really just a follow-up from June and July of this, of last year.
All right.
The
Yes.
Stricks, one and five were not directly related to the ordinance change that was from the state, from the. So we just discovered it along the way, and we had done separate cards and let those people know, it was a handful of people. So, so you're correct, it doesn't change anything that voters will be affected by, it doesn't change anything now, they've already been ordered.
That's what, that's what I was concerned about.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you, any comments or questions? Okay, so, yeah, is there a motion to do so? Set the public hearing date? Is there a second? Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try mine, select woman, Renner.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Lisa, Gloria, and Pete. All right, item nine, appointments and resignations, nine dot one, act on the resignation of Charles Delick, Deelick, from the Water Pollution Control Authority, is there a motion with appreciation and regret?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
Let me try your minds, select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Nine dot two, act on a recommendation to appoint Chip Doran to the Standing Fields Committee, I'd like to make that recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Just for the record, for those who weren't paying attention, or moved into town recently, Chip was our longtime athletic director and a tremendous supporter of the youth in our community, so appreciate him coming back into, into public service. Let me try your minds, select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Discuss to take possible action on the reappointment of the tree warden for the town of Guilford in accordance with section twenty-three fifty-eight of the Connecticut general statutes. And Kevin doesn't get a vote, but we're reappointing Kevin, although he's, he's, he's the one who was prepared to so. So is there a motion?
Some moved.
And a second? Let me try your minds, select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously.
Did anything come of the other Public Works employees becoming assistant tree ward, and remember there was that comes?
Or arborists.
Arborists, well, they're, they're.
They're already arborists.
We have one.
Kevin's suggestion was they became assistant tree ward, so they could make a significant.
Kevin has not come forward with a recommendation on that as of yet, so we, we will take a look at it. And if that individual could act instead, and or make evaluations.
I mean, it makes sense.
Yeah. Item four, act on a recommendation to appoint Christine Manon as an alternate to the Youth and Family Services Board to fill a vacancy for a term that expires September thirty, twenty twenty-six, is there, is there a motion?
Yes, some moved.
Some moved, and a second?
Another familiar name to many folks at Guilford's legs.
Let me try your minds, select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously. Item ten, request for the use of town property, ten dot one, act on a request from the community dining room to use the green July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, to raise awareness for food resources, is there a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Yeah, second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? Let me try your minds.
What, I haven't, oh, I do, I'm sorry, I, I, I think, I think we're back to the point that we've made for some recent, other recent applications about this not being a Guilford nonprofit. I would think that's an issue.
True, I thought about that, but they probably serve Guilford folks with some regularity.
They do.
They definitely do, and, and they're a great organization, but, I mean, I, I guess we've never defined what we mean by Guilford nonprofits, so we can define it however we want, I, I don't want to, I wouldn't want to hold this up over sort of a technicality like that. I also was noticed on their application, it, it seems like they might not be prepared for this undertaking, I don't know if they've done this before, but I'm seeing where we ask for a description of sanitary facilities, they respond with a question, which is, are their bathrooms available on the green? So, and then there's a comment about traffic control, they say we will need parking spaces blocked off, it just seems like maybe they have some boxes to check on, on their plan.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I could go either way on this one, but what's the case? The, one, one of the things we might want to suggest, it's.
It's July, late July.
We've got plenty of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should pass it with the understanding or condition that you talk to them and are concerned.
And, and it's also probably germane to what I was going to bring up under old business, based on some conversations that we had last week around the displays on the green, so, just, it's perfect on it. It, it, again, only because it is our policy, it's not hard, fast rule, it's been a policy for the use of the green, in those terms, it's not written in ordinances, so we have the discretion to do so, but that, that discretion can be very dangerous, so I, I think we do need to, to talk through it, so is there a motion to table?
Some moved.
A second?
Sure, I'll second, yeah.
Yeah, all right, let me try your minds, select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye.
So here we are again, right? With the, with the same, same item coming up here, right? And, you know, we have traditionally done this for years, years and years, the, the schools, I think O L M used to do it, the country school's been doing it for as long as I've been here. This is to act on a request, act on a request from the county, the country school to place signs on the green advertising its open house and school fair, both taking place April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, assigned four thirteen to four twenty-seven.
Assign, assign permission different from use permission, you know?
Right.
Yeah, that, I, I, I think that has been a distinction we've made for years.
Yeah.
And I, I, I'm comfortable there.
I mean, the signs that the country schools in Madison, but they, they, it's open to students from anywhere, so. I, I think signs for, for nonprofits that are not in Guilford makes sense to me.
Yeah.
It relates to Guilford, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I agree with Sandy.
I agree, all right, so there is a motion, is there a motion?
Some moved.
And a second?
Seconds.
Any further comments or questions?
And just the, the summary, I'm looking at the application, but the summary itself said to request to place signs on the green, advertising its open house, oh, and the school fair, those.
Right.
So there's an open house and a school fair, it says both taking place on April twenty-seventh, but they're.
They're at their.
Their location, right, okay, that's fine.
All right, we got a motion, a second, let me try mine, select woman, Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Okay, committee reports, Sandy?
The Housing for Economic Development Plan Committee, AKA the Affordable Housing Committee, has been meeting a fair amount in relation to possibility of language for inclusionary zoning in the upcoming P and Z rewrite. I'm happy that it has been, that the official meeting for the P and Z rewrite has been pushed out. This is something that most of, most of us, I think, are in favor of, and people, as they are educated about it, will be in favor of it, but it's complicated, and the memo that we originally sent to the P and Z was general, and we need to clear up a few things. I mean, it's ultimately up to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but our committee wants to be as clear as we can be about how we believe it should be handled, so we're meeting a lot, that was my best bottom line. And then on another committee that was an unofficial committee, I represented the Board of Selectmen at a informal meeting with some of the members of the Park and Rec Commission and the Director of the Community Center about reporting on their program funds and, and how, how we can better understand that in relation to the total town budget. And we're going to meet again, and we need to, we realized that we needed to, we should have included the finance director at the meeting, because I was saying things that I wasn't sure. Well, I didn't say anything that was untrue, but I realized that MJ can give greater clarification to some of the ways that we handle it, so. That was a positive meeting, we're not, I'm not prepared to report on it completely right now, but we will, and I'm sure when we do, we'll have Rick here with us as well.
Thank you, any comments or questions? And thanks for the continued work on that committee.
With the housing committee? Oh, since Christ wore knickers, no, which I never heard that expression before. I believe it was, it was either twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen.
Since its inception.
Since inception, right, and as I told you, I came late to the meeting, the second meeting, it was named Chairman, so.
That'll, that'll teach you. Okay, thank you, Sandy, for that update. Anything under correspondence or? Nope, all right. Old business, based on a couple of emails that were floating around last week, and the pop-up polar bear colony on the green. We were, some, appropriately, some questions are raised about the process for applying for that, et cetera. We, for this one, I think I shared with you, we actually did receive an application for the, for, for that pop-up installation and use. The, the, that was, I think, originally designed to allow Park and Rec to, to, to put things up on the green at, at one point between, in the holiday season. So we can look at extending the window on that to include the entire year, which would accommodate potential other displays that may be planned. The, 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 the larger question is, does that, and they have to have Pete take a look at this, based on the policy that we've put in place with the pop-up stuff, which quite honestly, that was the first time I'd seen that, that app, that, that type of application, as opposed to just a straight use of the green. But I think nonetheless, we're going to continue, and as I mentioned to, to all of you, I thought I had gotten the not-so-anonymous artist to agree that to, to have a sponsor, the, whoever the Guilford nonprofit beneficiary of the auction of those items be the sponsoring agency asking for use of, of the green, which puts it back in compliance with our overall policy of Guilford nonprofits, so there seems to be something got lost in the translation, the application did say Meals on Wheels, but it was not, not necessarily on, on their behalf, they didn't submit it, so I, I think we're going to make, they didn't originate it, right? Now, I, I, I think the, in this one, there might have been some need for a period of time, because the timing on that was our first snowfall, so that could have been in December. But it, it wasn't, so. I, I, for, for something like this, and again, I don't want to set separate rules for separate individuals, but I, I, I do think we're going to go, I will enforce the, the application has to come from the beneficiary, the nonprofit who's the beneficiary, and I think we can, we can grant some leeway relative to a timeline when, that, that display may take place.
I think there's a way to figure that out, and the other two times that this person did this, it didn't, it wasn't snow-related.
One was, the first one was.
That's right, the first one was. That's right, the first one was, and then it was, but I think we can, I think the most important thing is that it comes from a not-for-profit, which fits the guidelines, and then the weather issues we can figure out.
Well, I think that prior notice, I mean, you know, we just have to, there has to be some control, right? You know, that's why you don't want to inhibit the spontaneity, spontaneity of it all, but by the same token, you gotta have.
Yeah.
If we don't address it, it just leaves us wide open to anyone putting anything on the green whenever they feel like it.
Agreed.
Yeah, I I do think it's important for us to be granting permission and not forgiveness on something like this. And and another point to put out there, I'm not sure if this is, I'm not sure how valid this is, but there's also an insurance question. Because I I think having that particular display on the green, it's so, it's just so great, and it's so attractive, it's attractive to kids. What's the expression, an attractive nuisance?
Nuisance, yeah.
You know, you could, I could just see a kid, you know, scooting across the street to get to it, or I I don't know if it's something that we do have an insurance requirement on the use of the green process, and I think it's important for everything.
I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Pete about the risk management aspect of that, and municipal immunity at large, writ large, which provides us all kinds of.
Pretty broad.
Broad, yeah, very broad, so, but it's a good point, so. All right, so I'll, I'll continue to refine that process, how's that, does that make sense?
I mean, everybody else, I'm not sure if it got mentioned here, but there were, there were literally, there was a way to donate in real time to Meals on Wheels, buy these things, wasn't there a sort of?
Yeah.
It's an art, it's an art. And and so that, that doesn't, that's secondary to the fundamental point that we need to be in front of it. But the substantive point of what was happening with these things, if it had come through in a timely fashion, it seems to me almost certain that we would have said, sure, no problem, this was contrary to the general purpose, but the process.
Got to have a heads up.
The process needs to be respected.
Agreed, agreed, thanks. All right, thanks for working through that. All right, new business. All right, we're going to have one item under executive session, so we'll have public forum first, and Nona is, you wanted to hear up?
Yeah, I'll read it. Do I have to stand up?
No, you can do it right from there, so just a name and address for the record, so.
Yes, I am Nona Blumer, and I live at nine eight eight Leets Island Road on the Bramford Town Line. It has recently been brought to my attention that the Shoreline Greenway Trail is placing a good deal of publicity about itself in Guilford's public places. I am here to remind you, our selectmen, that hundreds of Guilford residents have already rejected their initial proposal to build a segment on Route One by the Madison Town Line with a very simple and obvious argument that they have no map, no plan, and therefore deserve no approval for any standalone segment. The vague black line in their trail map running from Bramford Center through Guilford Center to the Madison Clinton Town Line certainly does not qualify as a map, nor did the lines on their earlier maps, which ran across private property, wetlands, and historic areas, including our scenic highway Route one four six. Please do not reintroduce a situation that pitted downtown people against each other. And please insist on a complete map and plan from the Bramford Town Line to the Madison Town Line. Consider that a Greenway Trail need not go along the fragile shoreline. Above all, let's not forget, no map, no plan, no approval. Thank you.
Thanks, Nona.
I I have brought along an article to remind you of the turmoil we went through with the last proposal of the Greenway Organization. And I'll, I'll put it on after your, after your meeting's over.
Wonderful, thank you, thank, thank you.
Thank you for listening.
You're quite welcome. There, I have had a series of discussions with the folks at the Greenway Trail. Some of the same sentiments were expressed to them, given the nature of the representations that had been made during that troublesome period with the Shoreline Greenway Trail, as well as some assumptions they made about being able to utilize the private property, not the least of which was Guilford Land Conservation Trust property. There is, there is acknowledgement on their part that their, the methodologies and the representations were accurately described as 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 being less than honest and above board. They're, and they're acknowledged, same. The new map that I think you're referring to, which is really just a small little trifold, and the current management of the Greenway Trail acknowledges that the portion through Guilford is likely going to be on Route one forty six, which would obviously require State of Connecticut approval for utilization with any kind of road markings, it's already a scenic bike path, scenic bike road or national registered bike, bike roads. So they're, they've come back to the table with a different attitude, a different perspective. But the points that you've made are still valid, at least as far as I'm concerned, that we need to see the fully fleshed out plan. We're not going to support building these islands with the assumption that there there will be other action taken up to and including eminent domain to make sure that it works, and quite honestly, as long as I'm sitting in this chair, I will not support the use of eminent domain to do something like that. This is a, you know, that's private property rights, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you for your comments. Okay. Yes, we can, let's, we need, before we do that, let's, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Some moved.
Second.
Let me try my mind, select woman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries.
Why has Butch been on all day? Does he just, he just wants to see what we're doing?
He often does that.
Yeah. So a motion to come out of executive session?
Some moved to come out of executive session.
Second, second, let me try my mind, select woman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
During executive session, no motions were made, no action was taken. Before we entertain a motion to adjourn, Trace, have you been able to see if we, those meeting dates are available at Community Center?
I haven't heard back yet.
Okay. Cool. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Yes, okay.
Second.
Second.
Always, sorry.
Let me try your mind, select woman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
All right, Sue, have a safe trip home.
Thank you.